Good evening, everyone. I will call the Air Select Board to order on Tuesday, April 2, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote participation or remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom in Channel 8. Public may access proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-908-00793 or by calling 929-2056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@airMA.us or 978-772-8220 extension 100 prior to the meeting. I'd like to ask everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For tonight's meeting with the Select Board, we do have two members present here in town, and we do have Mr. Copeland joining us via Zoom, so all the votes will be roll call votes. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I have none.
I have none.
I don't have any either.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Agenda is approved. There are no announcements this evening?
No.
Excellent. Is anyone here for public input? All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is continued public hearing, Mass. General Law 148, Section 13, Amendment to Storage of Flammable and Commosible Liquids, Gases and Solids License with JR Realty Corporation of One Nemco Way. Are any representatives from JR Realty present this evening? Would you like to come on down, please? Evening. Thanks for joining us. Mind just saying your name for the record, please?
Joseph Basile, Company President.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, if I may get up to speed a little bit?
That would be great. Thank you.
So they came for the public hearing on our last meeting. They want to increase their storage capacity by an additional 500,000. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. And a question was brought up as to whether or not they had insurance. So the other gentleman who was here kind of said, and he goes, "No," and that caused a little bit of confusion. He realized that, you know, he kind of misspoke, but at that point, it was like, okay, we need proof. And of course, you know, there was questions as to whether or not that's actually required, but there was so much confusion at that time that they were asked, and they agreed very nicely, to come back with the answer to that question. So I just want to say that I greatly appreciate the fact that you were willing to come back just to calm down all the confusion that happened. So that should get you up to date.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I do also note that we do have a memo from the Assistant Town Manager stating that, bear with me for a moment, I've read this over the weekend, that there is in fact insurance certificate, and there's no other issues.
Yeah, just to explain a little bit, I talked to Town Council at length on the issue. There's no requirement that Catania JR Realty provide a certificate of insurance in this instance. Of course, we asked, of course, they provided one. Town Council's reviewed it. It's all set to go.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions regarding?
That was, I recall, that was it. And like I said, there was just so much confusion about it. It was just like, you know, we'll just solve this.
Excellent. And this is a public hearing. Is there any questions or comments from other members of the audience or the public? No? Okay. Then I will take a motion if it wills the board.
Sure. I'll make a motion that the board approve the amended license for JR Realty as presented.
Seconded.
All right. Roll call the vote. Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. They're approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming back.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you for coming back.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the -- seconded.
Thank you. Roll call the vote. Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. The public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Assessing Administrator, Ms. April Inacone. I apologize if I'm butchering that.
That's about as best as you're getting.
All right. Thank you. Please feel free to come forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Members of the Board, good evening. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Ms. April Inacone and her appointment to be appointed as Assessing Administrator for the Town of Air. You have all of the information in your packet, including April's resume. She is currently the Assistant Assessor in the Town of Littleton, and she is looking forward to advance to the next step. She has a wealth of municipal experience, as you can see from her resume. We interviewed her, by far the most qualified candidate that we received, and I'm respectfully requesting that the Board, after they have any questions for April, request that the Board vote to ratify her appointment as Assessing Administrator to be effective April 8, which will be her first day.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Welcome, April. Do you want to take a few minutes and kind of tell us about yourself, your experience, and what you hope to accomplish?
So, yeah, I have, again, a lot of different experiences in town government, from the Finance to the Select Board to Water Sewer, DPW. I have a good friend, my boss, actually, Kathy Miller in Littleton, is, she was the Chief Assessor, and she kept telling me what a great field this was to get into, and that there was a lot of movement, and it was a good time to start learning. So, of course, I go in as Assistant, and I started taking classes and learning, and I'm enjoying it more and more. It's a very varied position. Things are done annually, lots of different types of, you know, working with the public, working with the finance team, and works well with a lot of my background. And so, yeah, I didn't quite expect to make this step quite this quickly, but, you know, Air is a great community, and I live in Shirley. My kids have gone to school here, and so I figured now's the chance to move my way out.
Excellent. Welcome. Sean or Janice, any questions or comments?
I have no questions, but I, you know, am going to point out that April is being appointed in April. So I'm just, I just think, I just think that that could mean something very positive. So there you go.
There you go. I did not, I did not think of that.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Sean. I don't have any further questions, so I'll take a motion from the Board.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the ratification of appointment of the Assessing Administrator of April Inacone, effective April 8.
I'll second. Roll call the vote. Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Congratulations.
It's official.
Thank you.
We're working with you. All right. So next item on the agenda is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. We're going to do a final review and approval of the 2024 Town Meeting Warrant. Kurt, I'll turn it over to you to call the Finance Committee to order, please.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Freskowski, Finance Committee Chairman, and I call the Finance Committee meeting to order on April 22 at?
Second.
April 2, excuse me, looking at the warrants instead. April 2 at 6:14 PM.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. And just to note, there is one member of the Finance Committee who is participating via Zoom also this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Yes, just to note that we have, Jin Hong is joining us by Zoom, and present here is Bob France, Eric Sekman, Andrew Sealy, and myself.
Excellent. So, Robert, I'll turn it over to you for introductions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance Committee, good evening. Just a couple of quick overview on the warrant in the budget. And you have hard copies in front of you of the warrant that was sent to you through the Select Board's packet on March 29. There are 31 warrant articles to the annual Town Meeting Warrant. There were no citizens petitions received by the deadline of noon on March 29, per the Town Clerk. I just want to point out, since the Select Board last met on the March 19 meeting, two articles were added since then. One was Article 30, the extension of the sewer line on Willow Road for benefit of 254 to 260 Air Road in Littleton. And as it says in the explanatory note, there will be a public hearing with the Select Board on this for April 16 of 2024. Also added was Article 31, which is the Senior Tax Work Off Program. Specifically, this article increases the amount that the maximum reduction that somebody can earn in the program from $1,500 to $2,000 a year. Lastly, before I turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out, as always, there's always some, some final things. Just a couple of points. Under Article 3, which is the contract funding for the Air Police Patrol Association, in the explanatory note, it says, it says on the draft, original draft was $33,793. That should be changed to $35,793. So $35,793, a last minute, you know, adjustment per the Police Department. And on Article 9, and the Enterprise Fund articles, under the sewer article, Article 9, where it says direct costs of, it says $3,033,184, that should be changed to $3,079,602. Again, it should be changed to $3,079,602 per the Finance Manager. So those were just two changes in the numbers. Lastly, I want to point out, as reflected in the Omnibus Budget in Draft 4, which was the final budget, per the Select Board and the FinCom, from the March 27 budget public forum, the $2,500 adjustment into the Council on Aging budget was made per the Board. So that, that change is reflected in both the final budget and in the Omnibus Budget. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that is, I'll turn it back over to you, and if there are any questions from the Board of the FinCom through you.
All right. So what I'd like to, we can just go through each of the articles. I'll read just the article number and the title. If anyone wants that for discussion, you simply say pass. We'll make a note. We'll circle back on that article. And if there's no discussions, then we'll take, the Select Board will take their vote afterwards. So Article 1, Salaries of Elected Officials. Article 2, Contract Funding for Air Police Patrol Association. Article 3, Contract Funding, Air Police Patrol Association Dispatchers. Article 4, FY 2025 Omnibus Budget. Article 5, Fiscal Year 2025, Air Shirley Regional School District Assessment. Article 6, FY 2025, Nishoba Valley Regional Technical Vacational Assessment. Article 7, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Article 8, Ambulance Enterprise Fund. Article 9, Sewer Enterprise Fund. Article 10, Water Enterprise Fund. Article 11, Capital Budget Requests. Article 12, Capital Budget Requests, Part 2, apparently. Article 3, Gatsby 45 OPEB Funding, sorry, 13. 14, Forward Funding of the Town's Pension Assessment. Article 15, Transfer of Free Cash Into the Town Special Revenue Fund for Opioid. Article 16, Stabilization Fund. Article 17, Revolving Funds, Article Amend Bylaw in Establishing FY 2025 Spending Limits. Article 18, First Year Interest, General Fund Borrowing. Article 19, Funding for Aquatic Weed Control for Town Ponds. Article 20, Matching Funding for Firefighters Grants. Community Preservation Acts, Article 21, the Community Preservation Act. Article 22, Community Preservation Fund, Transfer of Unexpendited Funds from Old Fire Station Projects. Article 23, Habitat for Humanity. Article 24, Acquisition and Purchase of 71 Sandy Pond Road. Article 25, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Update on the Town Zoning Map. Article 26, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Amendment to Section 320 dash 3.2. A of Air Zoning Bylaw. Article 27, Zoning Bylaw Amendment of Section 32, 320 dash 5.2 Table, Use of Regulations. Article 28, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Amendment to Section 320 dash 10 dash 3 dash A for Inclusionary Housing. Article 29, West Main Bridge Easements. Article 30, Extension of Sewer Line on Willow Road for the Benefit of 254 to 260 Air Road in Littleton. And finally, Senior Tax Work Right Off Program, MGL Chapter 59, Section 5K is Article 31. So we don't have anything else for, specific for discussions? So Sean or Janice, any questions, comments?
Well, I, did he say he had one? He said he didn't.
No.
Okay. So I never noticed this before, but when you happened to say, oh, Part 2, so Article 11 is Capital Budget Requests. It's a borrow article, but Article 12 is Capital Budget Requests. It is also an article. Should, I mean, do we want to like?
Differentiate those?
Differentiate those a little bit? Well, I see that, but it's just that, and I agree, and there's never been a problem. It's just when he said Part 2, it just, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it can put, where it says Article 11, Capital Budget Requests, I can put dash borrow.
That's perfect.
And on the other one, I could put Capital Budget Request dash Transfer.
Capital Stabilization Transfer. Yeah, that works. Yeah, just when, to Janice's point, when you're reading them over, like, out loud and thinking of the moderator when he's going through the process, it's going to sound very repetitive.
Yeah. Never noticed until you said Part 2, and I was like, huh.
Felt odd saying the same thing twice. So any other questions?
I didn't see anything. I looked over the explanatory notes, and I think that everything looks like it's covered pretty well.
Any other questions or comments from the Finance Committee?
None.
None. Okay. All right. Perfect. So for the Select Board, we're going to take a vote to approve the warrant.
I'll make a motion that the Board approve the warrant as presented with the changes that Robert mentioned.
Seconded.
Okay. Roll call the vote. Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. The warrant's approved by the Select Board. Kurt, I'll turn it over to you for FinCom recommendations.
Okay. We, as the Finance Committee, we are going to take a vote on, in this case, Articles 1 through 24, which are articles that call for the FinCom's recommendation, not recommendation or no opinion. And I'm going to suggest, I will need a motion in a second on this, that we vote on all of those articles at once. And so, can I get a motion for them?
What do you want to discuss it? Anyone has a discussion?
Very good. Thank you, Andrew. But before we do that, is there any one particular article that anyone would like to discuss and/or vote on separately?
No.
No.
Very good.
Do you want to ask Jin?
Jin?
No.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to set our status as recommend for all the aforementioned articles.
Seconded.
Okay. So roll call vote that the FinCom Committee will vote to recommend all Articles 1 through 24 of the warrant. Roll call vote. Bob France?
Yes.
Eric Sekman?
Yes.
Andrew Sealy?
Aye.
Jin Hong?
Aye.
And Kurt Freskowski?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Kurt. Looking through some of these, so Article 5 and 6, which are the school assessments, and then 22 and 23, there is a space on the warrant for, looks like a Select Board recommendation.
Which one?
5, 6, and then 22, 23. So the school assessments, we're not the sponsors on those. It usually, I guess, covers our recommendation. So I would be looking for if it wills the Board recommendation from the Select Board for Articles 5, 6, 22, and 23.
Didn't we just approve them?
We did. Do you want to use that as consent?
Well, I, yeah.
Okay.
Because otherwise, I feel like we're just going backwards.
That's fine.
So.
Understood.
Yeah.
No worries, then. All right. That's it, Mr. Primary, correct?
It is.
We're good to go on the warrant?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks, Finance, for coming tonight. They are going to stick around for the next item, which is a presentation of the ClearGov Budget Platform.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant Town Manager in just a moment. Appreciate everybody's patience, for everybody's benefit. On the 27th of March, we had wanted to do a brief presentation on this, and due to technical difficulties, that wasn't possible. But it is for tonight. So just to, just to give a little history, before COVID, the Town was looking for a method in which we could put current budget information, as well as archived budget information, in a very user-friendly way that anybody could access it right on any device, whether it's a tablet or a computer or so forth, and in addition to providing a wealth of that information, allow the user to select different ways that that information is presented. So with ClearGov, you can select different graph styles and so forth. Additionally, by consolidating all of this onto this platform, it will allow the Town, for the example, the Budget Book, which we present at Town Meeting, has been traditionally in a hard copy. This will be the last year, I think, of the Budget Book in that format. This will replace the Budget Book. It also gives the ability for anybody from a Town Department to a resident, to anyone interested in the finances of the Town of Air, to get that information and also to play with it a little bit, if you will. So with that, Ms. Antonellis is going to give a brief overview on this. We're looking to launch this live?
Friday.
On Friday. It will be launched live. We'd be more than happy, Mr. Chairman of the FinCom, to come to one of your future meetings for more in-depth presentation. Same with the Select Board. And lastly, any residents have any questions or want a tutorial, would be happy to work on that. And lastly, I want to thank Carrie Cooper, the Town Accountant, and Barbara Tierney, the Finance Manager, and Ms. Antonellis, who really put all of this together. So with that, I have to turn it over to Carly.
Thank you. So up here on the screen, you'll see our FY 25 Budget Book. We're still toying with the idea of printing these for Town Meeting. It's much larger than our former Budget Book, because there's so much information historically. I think we'll probably, if someone wants us to print it by request, we can certainly do that. And I'll show you a cool feature once we get to that point. So as of Friday, there'll be a link on our website, on the Town Managers page, the Finance Committee page, the Town Accountants page, the Finance Manager page, to bring you to this. This is the public web view of our Budget Book. So what we have, I'm just going to shrink this just a little so you get an idea. There's an introduction, just basic Town Hall hours, et cetera. And then, we kept what we had. We have the history of the Town, just a little, you know, blurb. Demographics. This is populated automatically by the ClearGov software, so that should be popping up any second. But it basically will tell you average household income, how many households we have, et cetera. I'm not sure why it's not loading at the moment, but we'll go to the org chart, which we had in our former Budget Book. We have the Resident's Guide to Town Meeting, which has a lot of terms. We also have the glossary. And then the budget process and calendar, you know, where we're at for the year, which we had in the, in the old version. And then we've added the financial policies, so it's an attachment right on the website. So these financial policies were updated and adopted by the Select Board in December and by the Finance Committee in January. So you'll be able to access them right with all the budget information. We have a budget overview that's been loaded for this year's Town Meeting. It shows what our recommended uses for free cash are, stabilization fund balances, the school assessments. And I, you can't really see those, so we got to change the color there. But, and then we have our staffing counts by location updated, which, again, was a piece of the Budget Book. We have our fund summaries, so you're able to go into, say, the Sewer Enterprise Fund. You'll be able to see historic from fiscal '20 forward, revenues and expenditures, what those expenditures are for, and the, you know, his, the breakdown by year of what the spending associated with each year and for each category. So in each of these graph representations, you're able to change it. If you like bar graphs better than pie graphs, you can change. Here, you're able to, again, change to your, to your preference. All the information stays the same. It's simply presentation. But this is a cool feature where we actually have the numbers loaded in the background, so you can pull up the spreadsheet view and see the exact figures and then the changes, just in a more succinct way. So we have that for all of our funds. Our funding sources, these were, again, in the Budget Book, this chart, just what our annual, what we take in, and then, you know, the percentage difference over the prior year. And then what we do here on the Department's page, you're able to, so each department will have a page. It gives a little brief description, what the spending history is in each department. Again, if you want to switch chart types, you're able to. And then, if you click down to the spreadsheet breakdown, everything is there, including, you know, what has been spent and what we've asked for in the FY 25 Budget. So all the information is current. I know, let's see, Chuck is here. We'll pick on him. So each department head will, you know, have a photo and then just an overview of what their department does, any goals. Some of the bigger departments, you'll see for Public Safety, where'd it go? Oh, there it is. Okay. The Police Department, it will have, the bigger departments will have their own org charts. You know, many departments here at Town Hall, obviously, are two people departments. You don't need an org chart. But for the bigger departments, they're listed here. The capital improvements, this was a slide from our old Budget Book, you know, highlighted in different colors what we're borrowing for, what we're going to transfer to pay for. So that's, and then the debt. The debt service by department, you're able to look. This was a slide in the former Budget Book, where we're at for debt, and then, so both general fund debt and the enterprise funds. funds. So one of the, there's several ways you can do this, but when you are, if you're looking to print, you can have a PDF of the whole budget book emailed to your email, they'll give you a link, you click, you download it onto your own system. And then, what we like on this is, you know, you want to print the budget book, but you don't need the financial policies, or the Residence Guide to Town Meeting. Those are some of the longer documents here. So you're able just to click what you'd like, and it will actually create your own version of a budget book, what you're looking for. So you can do, you know, all departments, or you can just pick and choose. So, it will create a digital budget book. Once you get the link, it will ask if you want to print it, it's, you know, it transfers, so it prints easily. We've been playing around with it. So I think it's going to be helpful, definitely, and that way you can select what you want to see, and you don't have to put in what you don't want to put in. Again, if anyone would like budget books printed for them, we're happy to do that, the whole, for parts of it. You know, we usually print about 150 for town meeting, and that's, now with printing costs, that's probably about $1,500 to do. So this, I think we'll be able to save some money, but again, we're happy to print them for residents, if they request. So this will be live Friday, we'll do like an announcement on the website, and the Facebook, and the X page, and then we'll get it out there, and if folks have questions, they're certainly welcome to call our office, or the Town Accountants' Office, and we can walk them through using it. But it is pretty self-explanatory, and very direct, so, yeah, so that's where we're at on that.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you Kerry, for all the work. I know it hasn't been just Kerry, so thank you, everyone who's worked on this, it's been a long time coming. Any questions or comments from Select Board or Finance Committee?
That was great, thank you.
Dennis, question?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. On the demographics that is automatically loaded by ClearGov into the module, do you know where they are pulling that demographic information from?
Yeah, so there's several different sources. I'm going to try to just pull it up while you're here. It does cite them all, I'm not sure why it's, oh, here we go. Yeah, let me share the screen again, just so everyone could see. Yeah, so it will tell you where they're citing the data from down here. So this is US Census Bureau, our daytime population, population by age group, and these, again, are all automatically populated. So it gives you just a snapshot of where the town's at. Thirty percent, where is it printing? In Air. So, and then you'll be able to go right on our budget page, and get this information. Right now, it's not easily accessible. You'd have to go through a couple different steps to get to the budget, so we think this is the best way to display it for folks.
Sure. And secondly, is there a, does it have the capacity, I mean, how many years prior can it go? Like, if you wanted to look at rate of growth, or whatever, over the last five, I know I'm not asking for 1978, but, you know, five, perhaps 10 years, can it kind of say?
So we, Mr. Chair, if I may, yeah. So we started loading the data in fiscal '20, right Kerry?
Yes.
So right now, we'll have like a four-year, five-year look back, and then we'll add to it every year. I'm sure we could put, you know, as we build it, we'll be able to have, everything will be stored there. So what's being displayed is, I think, four to five years of history. I'm sure we could do more if needed, but that's what we're planning on for now.
And that's what's there now?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Excellent, thank you Dennis, good questions. Pauline, you have a question?
Yes, thank you Carly, for the presentation. How soon before town meeting will the link be available? If you said so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did in the beginning, but it will be loaded April 5th, Friday, this Friday.
Okay, thank you so much, and just for the record, I'd like a copy, please.
Of the whole, everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Good question. So you said '20 and forward is loaded now, and will sort of continue, just to, I wasn't sure if you understood it correctly, it'll only, like, let's say we're 10 years in the future, it'll only show five, but we'll be able to look back further, is that what you were saying?
Kerry, do you know the answer to that?
Mr. Chair? The question is, so, we basically set it up, is, it goes by, if you just go to your actuals, so it will go back to your actuals, it will not show the budgeted amount. So right now, it's set up as fiscal '20 to '25, that'll show the actuals for '20, all the way up to '23, because we finalized, we closed out '23, so those are your actuals, there's no more budgeted. And '24, I have it set up right now, as it's showing our budgeted amount, but it's showing us an actual as of the presentation that Barbara did, for the spreadsheet of that date. So I uploaded it from November, I believe, November 4th, and that's the actuals as of that date. This, and then I did the '25 budget as of, I believe, last, as it was yesterday. So it will only show your actuals, it's not going to show your budgeted amounts, and it's showing from fiscal '20 to '25. It's not showing projected revenues, or anything past what we just did as of today.
Right, I'm sorry, I meant like, if five years down the road from now, will it only show, like, let's say we're in 2030, will it only show the last five years, and we'll have to search for previous years?
It will go back as many years as we want to publish, but you've got to remember that you're looking at your, it will show, you'll have to go back and just keep going. Right now, I only had it set up.
Okay.
There's other data in there, I just only have it set up from fiscal year '20 prior.
Thank you.
Excellent, any other questions or comments? All right, excellent, thank you, everyone. So with that, Carl, I'll turn it over to you, I think we're done with Finance Committee for this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting, Bob France?
Aye.
Eric Sekman?
Aye.
Andrew Sealy?
Aye.
Kurt Presskowsky says aye, and Gin?
Aye.
Very good, the Fire Committee is adjourned as of 6:42.
Thanks for joining us this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job Carly, thanks. All right, moving on in the agenda, so we have Alicia Hersey, Program Manager, Community Development Office. Looks like Alicia's not here, so Alan, you're going to cover for Alicia?
Where's Alicia?
I know you're bummed out, you're always happy when Alicia's here.
Alicia was coming.
Not so much. My apologies.
Well, you're the next two on the, you're the next one on the agenda also, so two birds with one stone.
But thank you, and through you, Mr. Chairman, I will say, Alicia does have a family commitment today, so I am, I'll just address the issue with thank you. And, yeah, it's very straightforward, for the past few years, we've been fortunate, our town, the neighborhood of affordable housing, NOAA, based out of East Boston, they acquired property at 65 Fitchburg Road, we've been in the process for three years of friendly 40B development. Yep, and again, 100%, it'll be 106 units, a really important and acutely needed thing in the region. NOAA's done an excellent job at getting, securing their permits and everything through the state, the Commonwealth, they have been successful with their low-income housing tax credits. They have a $4 million gap right now. The good news is, they've been in communication with Senator Markey's and Senator Warren's offices, so NOAA is going to, they are making a submission, a request, for a $4 million US Senate earmark for this year. So what we're here today to request, a letter of support from the Air Select Board, to both Senator Markey's office, and Senator Warren's office, and I believe we have also included US Congressional Representative Lori Trahan. So there are three letters, and it's important for the town to support them, they're in the home stretch. They're in the home stretch of securing all the funding, so they can begin construction, which would be wonderful, they're saying, if they line this up, all right, I won't go that far, but their hope is, Carly's a don't-over, I'm sorry, but if all goes well, they should be able to start into next year, and that would be a great thing. So this is it, we're requesting the other letters of support, and I'm here to answer any questions, or provide any detail.
Excellent, thank you Alan. Any questions from the Select Board?
I'm always for asking for money, I support.
I don't have any questions. Sean, any questions?
No, I read through the letters, I will support, I got no questions.
Excellent. Motion for support?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board sign a letter of support for federal earmark application for the Air Commons 40B as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call the vote, Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye, is approved, we are supportive.
Thank you very, very much, thank you. Stay put for-
Yeah, please, because now you're going to talk to us about the office of, sorry, the FY25 U-DAG budgets.
Yes. Thank you, and again, through you, Mr. Chairman. Please. Yes, we're here, before you this year again, as we've done in past years, for the FY25, the Air Office of Community and Economic Development, our budget, half of it is funded through the Omnibus Budget, and half of it is funded through our U-DAG funding for the town. So we have the memo before you, and again, we're simply requesting, and again, here to provide any information, or answer any questions with regard to the department, what we've done, and what we hope to continue to do, going into the coming year, and this is the budget we're presenting for the U-DAG portion.
All right, so the total portion that you're requesting from U-DAG is 12273.23.
That's correct.
And then there's a corresponding amount on the FY25 operating budget.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Just for clarity, for the public's sake. I have no questions, I'll open up to any questions from other Select Board members.
I have none, this is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
None here.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So I make a motion that the Board approve the request for the, sorry, for the AOCED FY25 budget, the U-DAG portion funding.
Seconded.
Roll call the vote, Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, you are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming Alan, appreciate it.
Thanks Alan.
And with that, we move to the Town Managers' report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. You have the warrants that were approved since the Board last met on March 19th, in the packet. As far as the administrative update, unless there are any specific questions from the Board on any administrative matters, it's been mostly budget and town meeting preparation. I'll get right into my action items. I just want to just point out that we have had a lot of exciting personnel changes at the Town Hall. We have a new Assistant Town Accountant, Lisa Castro, who started recently, the new Administrative Assistant in the Select Board Town Managers' Office, Maureen Adama, who started just yesterday. And tonight, we're pleased with the Board's support for April Inacone, the new Assessing Administrator, to start on April 8th. And I'm working with the Parks Commission, as we speak with the hiring process for a new Parks Director, as the Board is aware, Mr. Thomas is going to be scaling back, and ultimately retiring, but we have a transition plan in effect. So unless there's any questions, we'll get right into the action items for tonight.
Sean, Janice, any questions? Okay, no questions for me.
Great. So just briefly, on the annual town meeting update, with the Board's approval of the warrant tonight, as I indicated in the packet, the warrant will be officially posted by this Friday, April 5th, at the latest, that includes on the town's website, as well as various locations throughout town. The warrant at that time is also sent for printing and mailing to all households in advance of town meeting on April 22nd. We will begin the articles of the day, which each day will feature, leading up to town meeting, feature a couple of the articles from the warrant, different ones each day, with sort of an executive summary of what the article does, as well as links to additional information. Just as we have the budget webpage, we will have the town meeting webpage, that Cindy has started to put together, that will have all of the material organized by article, so you can find everything in one spot. For example, on the CPC projects, everything will be there. If there is something missing, or questions, let us know. There will be presentations through the moderator at town meeting, just want to point out, like, on the two contract articles, Article 2 and 3, usually do a brief snapshot, there'll be a presentation on Article 4, the budget. The schools, through the moderator, Article 5 and Article 6, each superintendent is looking to do a very brief presentation on the FY25 budget for their respective schools. And then all of the capital, as the Board knows, but just for the public's benefit, all departments that have capital are prepared to make a presentation at town meeting, and all of the capital can be found on the town's budget pages, as we speak, as we move forward. So there will also be a presentation on the acquisition, the proposed acquisition of 71 Sandy Pond, as well. So I think that we are in good shape, moving up to April 22nd. Again, if there are any questions, let us know, we want people to have all of the information and their questions answered, ideally before town meeting, but of course, at town meeting as well. I have two action items, very briefly. The first one, on behalf of the Senior Center COA Director, respectfully requesting that the Board vote to approve a donation in the amount of $2,000 to the Council on Aging. It's unrestricted, and I believe it's an anonymous donation, so both anonymous and unrestricted, and we're always grateful when we receive these, and we're just looking for the Board to accept that gift.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
None, so I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the unrestricted donation in the amount of $2,000 for the Air Council of Aging.
Roll call the vote, Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, it's approved.
And then, Mr. Chair, through you, if there is an objection, I ask the Fire Chief to come to the table. Item number four, we are respectfully requesting that the Board vote to authorize two letters of support for the Central Mass EMS, one to State Senator Jamie Eldridge, and the other one to State Representative Dania Senna. And through you, Mr. Chair, I think the Fire Chief could best capsulate the request.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, coming Chief.
As you see in your packet, the template they use to ask for support kind of explains everything, but we do lean on them as an EMS service, and I'm not sure how many towns you remember, Deputy, but it's several, it's a large area of Region 2 in Central Mass, so I thought it was important what they were asking for. They're not looking to gain extra money, they're just looking to get back what they didn't get two years ago, they cut some of the money, and they're just looking to get back to their level of funding as well, and I thought it was important, not only as a department, but as a town, to throw a support towards that.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Sean? No? Okay.
No. I make a motion that the Board approve the letters of support from the Select Board for the EMS service.
Seconded.
Roll call the vote, Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, approved.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Robert, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is new business and Select Board member questions. There's nothing specific on the agenda, but I'll open up for any questions or comments from the Select Board members.
Nothing?
Sean? No?
All right, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Livingston?
I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board move into executive session, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption Number 2, Non-Union Personnel, Assessing Administrator/Contractor, and that the Board not reconvene in open session, but adjourn from executive session.
Seconded.
Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, we're in executive session. And Chair says aye, we're in executive session, thank you very time for, thank you very much for your time tonight, everyone.